Can you please find out how many?
Senator Ada, Senator Ogun, Senator Blas.
Just present is all we need.
Senator Calvo, Senator Cruz, Senator Espaldan, Senator Guthers, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Palacios, Senator Pangalinen, Senator Vespicio, Senator Titegui, Senator Tenorio, Speaker Juan Fatt.
Present.
Speaker, there is a quorum today.
Thank you very much. Sergeant Arms, yesterday we were going to call for the vote and there was a request to make sure that the members were in the hall, so we are continuing from yesterday. Please call the other senators. Emanat Chantana, Lesho Chantan Mohan is called to order. It's 9:33. And yesterday, we left off with an amendment proffered by Senator Titegui, and that's on page two, on Bill 236, on line six, and that is to change one, the time there from 7:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Okay, so, and there was an objection yesterday, so I'm going to call then for the vote. So all those in favor of the amendment, amendment change from 7:00 AM to 6:00 AM, all those in favor, please raise your hand. At 6:00 to 6:00. No, we, it changed from 7:00 AM to 6:00 AM, so it'll be 6:00 to 6:00 now, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. The amendment passed. Okay, are there any others who would like then to speak on the motion? When we left off yesterday, we had, let me see, an amendment, so I have on the list then to speak now on the motion would be Senator Palacios and then Senator Ada. On the, on Bill 236. No, 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 no. Okay, so Senator Ada, so Senator Palacios, you, you don't, you wish to speak then? Okay, so then on, on the motion to send it down to the third reading file without any objections, so. To substitute Bill 255, and recognize the author, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Let me turn off my cellphone.
See, if you have it on here, it's only $5, but outside.
If you have it outside, it's $500. I just want to make sure that everyone is looking at the same version of the bill, Bill 255 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Senior Citizens, and it consists of six pages.
With two asterisks on it right after the committee?
Double asterisks, yes. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 255 COR substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Senior Citizens, with the double asterisks be placed in the third.
Well, be accepted first, because this is the new version?
That the new version be accepted.
What, let me ask you a question first, just to make sure, because it says substitute bill in the second reading, was this the substituted bill?
This was the substituted.
Okay, so then you are correct then for third reading then?
This, no, the, the one, the two-page, one was actually missing pages. The one that was in the red folders.
Can you find me? I don't have the committee report. One, can we take a brief recess, because I don't have my committee report?
Madam Speaker, I believe, I believe that the substitute version should be the one with the two asterisks at the end of the, as substituted by the Committee on Public Safety. That should be the correct version.
I do. Does everybody have a coffee now? Okay, Senator Ada, you may then proceed.
I, Madam Speaker, I, I further move that Bill 255 be placed in the third reading file and for purposes of discussion.
You may continue.
Madam Speaker, I, first of all, I just want to outline what are the objectives of Bill 255. Bill 255, of course, is a further expansion of the existing cellphone restriction bill, which was introduced and passed by the legislature a couple of years ago, which prohibited the texting, a driver from texting while operating a motor vehicle. What Bill 255 does is it places now restrictions on the use of cellphones while operating a motor vehicle. And more specifically, it restricts drivers from using a mobile phone in hand while driving. So what we see normally is, right now, the law actually allows you to pull out your phone and either use your voice dialing feature or whatever, say, call home, it automatically dials, and then you can be driving down the road and actually talking on the phone. Bill 255 will actually prohibit that practice while driving. Fully licensed drivers, however, will still be allowed to use any number of hands-free devices, either a Bluetooth or a wired, or a wired earpiece to make, to make phone calls while driving. So, again, they do have available on the market, for example, in some of your more modern luxury cars, they do have the Bluetooth device where you can be driving and talking or, while you're driving, and keep both hands on the wheel, or you have the Bluetooth device on your ear and are able to then actually engage in conversation. So Bill 255 will continue to allow for that actual use of the cellphone, and I will explain later also some of the shortfalls of that. There are, of course, exemptions. If the individual is driving down the road and he finds that some vehicle is operating erratically on the road, and he really should call 911 to get a police patrol out there, then certainly those calls are, are allowed. It also would allow for the use of what is called a half duplex, which includes your push-to-talk services, or operating a ham radio while driving. And the reason why the bill allows for that is, studies have shown that the intensity of the conversations that are conducted on the communications devices that are in the category of half duplex are not as distracting. The intensity of the conversation may be to the extent of dispatch, I'll be five minutes from my location, I'll inform you when I get there, out, and that's it. In contrast, in a regular cellphone conversation, it's a two-way talk, and the conversation usually are found to be a lot more intense, and the intensity of that conversation is really what causes the driver distraction. The bill also does provide for an awareness and education requirement by service providers, by automobile dealers, rentals, and automobile insurance companies. And basically, what the requirement is, is that, is that, for example, if I go to Guam Telephone Authority and subscribe to their cellphone, they will be required to give me some kind of information sheet that informs me that driving on Guam's highways is, and using the telephone while driving on Guam's highways is illegal. Now, when the bill was initially introduced, the prohibition of using the cellphone while you were driving was a secondary offense. However, the, the change that was made is that now, the use of the cellphone will be a primary offense. And the difference is that, when it's a secondary offense, you have to be committing a, some other traffic-related violation. So, for example, I ran through a stoplight. The police officer can pull me over for that, give me a citation, and also, if he noticed that I was using the cellphone while I was running through that traffic light, then he can cite me for talking on the phone illegally. What Bill 255 does now is, it's a primary offense, in other words, you just put your device down and continue attention to your driving, unless you're driving hands-free. Now, the question then comes up, so why place restrictions on the use of cellphones while driving? And again, we go back to studies that have demonstrated that cellphone use while operating a motor vehicle is a significant contributor to distracted driving. And the effects of it are, for example, it increases, they found that the use of a cellphone while operating a vehicle increases the probability of traffic accidents. A driver is said to be four times more likely to cause an accident because the driver's concentration is on the telephone conversation and not on the safe operation of the vehicle on the roadway. It is also, the use of a cellphone while driving is comparable to the impairment that one experiences when he is driving under the influence, and the impairment to one's ability to drive safely is comparable to driving with a blood alcohol content in excess of .08 percent. And these were studies that were conducted under the sponsorship of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. And lastly, the cellphone used while driving is the number one, has been found to be the number one source of driver inattention. Certain activities may be more dangerous than talking on a cellphone, however, cellphone use occurs more frequently and for longer durations than other riskier behaviors. Thus, the number, the number one source of driver inattention is cellphones. Now, what is the risk potential related to distracted driving on Guam that's attributed to cellphone use? The number of cellphones on Guam has increased significantly in recent years. Approximately 11% of vehicles on the road, and this 11% is an extrapolation from national studies, and so took that proportion and applied it here to Guam, and, and then took that statistic and said that approximately 11% of vehicles on the road, or approximately 11,500 vehicles on Guam, being operated on Guam's roadways, the driver would most likely be using a cellphone. Traffic volumes on Guam's highways will increase significantly, and traffic patterns will be disrupted significantly as road construction activities begin, hence greater attention to driving will be imperative. And finally, with respect to the risk potential for distracted driving on Guam, the current number of cellphone subscribers is estimated to be, on Guam, is estimated to be greater than 120,000 units. Cellphone subscribers will inevitably increase as the population grows. The need for action. With greater expected traffic on our roads over the next few years, and the ever-increasing use of mobile phones, it is imperative that we, as a body, take action to make our roadways safer. The problem with not having a cellphone ban is that it sends the uneasy message that phoning while driving is a safe activity, and nothing much else works in trying to curb dangerous behaviors with real public costs on the road. Now, there's admissions that I would like to make with regards to whatever the shortcomings might be with Bill 255. First of all, the use of hands-free devices while driving bears the same level of distraction, and it's not a safer alternative. In other words, by using the Bluetooth on your car and driving down hands-free and engaging in that intense conversation, does not make that driving behavior any more safe than if you would just to put your telephone down, wait till you got to your destination, or pulled over and made that telephone call. So, that certainly is an admission that needs to be made upfront. The second admission is that the enforcement of a prohibition of hands-free devices would be impossible. A police officer could not distinguish between a driver mumbling to himself from one who is talking via hands-free device. And we also cannot deny the benefits that the technology brings. Granted, there may be some people that are able to chew gum and walk at the same time without hurting themselves. There may be people that can talk on the cellphone and drive safely at the same time, but how many are those? And all we really need is that one that will run the traffic light and cause a serious accident. And finally, if the law seems extreme, that phoning while driving already seems, if the idea of a law seems extreme, if phoning while driving already seems ingrained in our culture, and if we all feel capable of comfortably managing the activity, one might simply remember that we once felt the same way about drinking and driving, an activity that each year claims more than three times the number of lives lost on, on September 11th, or by another measure, the total number of U.S. casualties in Iraq. So, Madam Speaker, I realize that there are those who are not fully sold on the ban of cellphones while driving, but I would ask my colleagues to fully consider that if we do not at least place this as a standard on our highways, that we want to promote safe driving, just as we did in the recent months here where we actually passed a bill to require the use of seat belts, to require that children are placed in a child restraint seat, that this is another safety measure that needs to be implemented so that we can make our roads safer out there as it becomes more congested with the increasing population, as it becomes more disrupted because of the construction that is going on, and every measure that we take to make our highways safer certainly is, is important to our community. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. On the motion, are there any speakers? How's that? Ogun, Senator Pangalinen, Vice, Senator Titegui.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I was listening intently, trying to find a conclusion to some of the arguments that was being given, and it's kind of like, you know, just taking us halfway there. There's 11,000 extrapolation, 11,500 cars on the road using a cellphone, and I was waiting for, and what? Did traffic accidents increase by 20%, 5%, 30%? Never mind whether or not they had cellphones in the car, it's just, have we seen an increase in traffic accidents, you know? Try to tie it. So I was just kind of waiting, and nothing. So, I don't know what to make of that. There, all the studies say that it's the act of talking on the phone and not having a phone in your hand that is the danger, and that it presents the risk to an accident, and you can't have a phone in your hand, but you can still talk on the phone, in a Bluetooth, in a Lexus, that comes standard equipment, but it'll cause you to, your chances of injuring somebody on the road from distracted driving is the same as the guy driving in the Nissan Sentra with a phone in his hand, but, nothing. You know, only the guy in the Nissan Sentra with a phone in his hand cannot drive, but the guy in the Lexus with a Bluetooth can. I mean, I'm just trying to tie it together, and maybe it is undisputed that talking on the phone is distracted driving, and the danger is distracted driving, no matter what. So even a conversation with somebody in the car, is that distracted driving? So shouldn't we have nobody talking to each other in the car because that's distracted driving? We realize certainly, you know, the, the need to kind of grab the information where, from where it's available, and make a conclusion, but all the conclusions that are being made was, it's talking on the phone, no matter where the phone's at, whether it's on your dashboard, or it's in your hand, that is, that causes accidents, or has the propensity for the cause of accidents, but we're not willing to make that final step and say, then nobody talks and the phone in the car, period. If we really want to make the road safe, it's kind of like, another bill that I had a problem with earlier, you know, where only six people can sit in the back of a truck without a seatbelt, but riding in the back of a truck without a seatbelt means you're going to fly out when you have an accident, so it doesn't matter whether there's one of you, five of you, or 10 of you, you're going to fly without a seatbelt, but we're going to allow up to six of you to ride in the back of the truck. I'm just trying to, again, tie all this in together to make the conclusion, and I understand that maybe half-pregnant is okay, and, you know, doing something halfway is better because we're halfway towards being safer, because all the guys who don't have Bluetooth in their car will not be able to use the phone, so the road is going to be, so there's only going to be 5,250, or 5,750 people on the streets now because they're the ones who have the thing, and so we're going to get rid of the other 5,000, so we're going to have, be half as safe as we were if we didn't outlaw, you know, talking to cellphones with a unit in your hand. We're going to be halfway safer now, and that's a good thing, and I, I agree, it's a good thing. But if we have the opportunity to do something better than good, shouldn't we do something better than good? Because the statistics, if we're going to rely on the statistics, the statistics are indisputable according to the presentation. It doesn't matter. So if we know, if we know, then why won't we, I guess, and I get, I, I heard the explanation where we don't know if somebody's talking to himself or talking on the phone. Well, if the guy's talking to himself, he's still distracted, get him off the road, you know? So maybe that is the presumption, that you see somebody talking away on the phone, pull him over and find out whether he's talking to himself or he's talking on the phone, and, and give him a ticket, either way. So, again, I'm trying to find, you know, and, and get to the end, because the arguments I've had only takes me halfway on this bill, and, you know, I guess I'll have to jump over the cliff my, on my own, or stay on, on this side and not jump off it. But I understand, we will do some good on this, because if the statistics are as presented, again, you know, if you take off, if you take the 5,000 people that are on the road at one time that have those cellphone in their hand, at least you know they won't be distracted. We'll leave it to the other guys to pay attention. Okay, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangalinen. Senator Titegui, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm, I believe that my good colleague from Manila, everybody moves every year, so, these intentions are well received, and, but I, I do have to agree with the previous speaker that without statistics, without data showing and indicating that this is really a, a problem on our roads today that we're receiving. Right now, I'd like to just read to you something that I, I received with regards to hand-free cellphones laws that may or may not be unsafe. And it says, "Governments may be acting under false assumption of safely, of safety when making laws that require drivers to use headsets or other hands-free devices when talking on cellphones, as studies are indicating that hands-free devices may actually make distractions an even greater issue for the drivers on the phone." Let me go straight down to the National Highway Traffic Safety. First, says the general, "A new study by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration indicates that voice-activated dialing methods cause drivers to spend nearly twice as long dialing the phone number as the old-fashioned button punching does." Second, "A 2001 Norwegian study shows that drivers who use hands-free devices makes more calls than drivers who use the traditional cellphones." And a third, and this is in And a third, and this is in Europe where the speed limit is quite high, Madam Speaker, at that, "A Swedish study states that drivers using hand-free devices drive even faster than the other cellphone-using drivers while they're braking. Response time remains the same as other cellphone users, up to 45% slower than the drivers who aren't talking on the phone." There is data coming up nowadays, since the law has been passed to have no hands-free devices in states like Washington, New Jersey, New York, and they're finding that this is really not making the difference to make the roads safer, but enhances it for them to use the phone more often. It becomes very difficult, you still are required, I have a cellphone here, an activated device, I still must hold this device in my hand to make a call even if it's voice-activated, push here, oh, that's my pictures. Last night's pictures, okay. But even to push it to activate, say a command, did you hear that, Madam Speaker? Let's do it again. Oh.
Call 477.
Oh, no. No, I didn't say call that number, I said call this number. No, I did not say that number. You are constantly on this phone, talking to it and saying, no, I didn't say that number, call 477. Now, Madam Speaker, compared to just pulling up the phone, having your own responsibility and safety, you call a number, and that's that. For instance, Senator Rory Sfisio is calling me right now.
It's not ringing.
And it's not ringing. But Madam Speaker, you know, all being said and joking aside, it's important that we keep our highways safe, but I really truly believe that data is now showing that by not allowing anybody to use their cellphone on the, on the road is not going to make it even safer, or using hand-free devices. In fact, it may enhance it. So Madam Speaker, though I do respect the author of this bill and his intentions, I must have to object. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tai Tegui. Are there any speakers on the motion? Senator Tenorio, you recognize.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, I rise to speak with regards to Bill Number 255 substituted with a great degree of reservation, and this is why I have the reservation, that the legislative intent in the first line speaks to the core issue that the real problem is, which is distracted driving. Distracted driving takes on many forms, and I think sometimes we find it all too easy to be able to hone in on use of a cellphone as the real demon. Impudent driving is what we used to cite people for when they were driving in the absence of distracted driving. If somebody was changing the station on their radio, or they were playing a different song on the CD, or if they were fighting with their wife, or they had a problem with the child, they got out of the seat and, you know, or seatbelt, and they had to get them buckled back in, and they got into an accident, and all of those things ultimately were distracted driving. And if something like that happened, we'd issue a citation for imprudent driving because we didn't have a distracted driving statute. I think it probably is, the time is ripe for distracted driving statute, but I don't think this is it. And there are many issues which have already been brought up, but one of them is giving certain exclusions, and one of them says, "Commercial truck drivers and emergency responders are excluded from certain restrictions of this act in the course of their duties." Let me just hone in on that a little bit, because as a police officer, and there are many actually in the hall who have the training and experience that goes along with how to conduct many activities in a police car and to be able to maintain safety. But I think, in my opinion, it would be, I think it's an insult to the general public to say that a commercial truck driver is allowed to have exemptions, but Madam Speaker, you don't, or that another person who has competent ability to be able to manage and control the mechanical functions of a vehicle out on the road doesn't have the basic same intellectual capacity to be able to handle a phone and drive the car at the same time. Now, if a police officer finds that someone using the phone and they got into an accident because they were distracted, they should be cited according to the violation of the Title 16, or if you want to create a distracted driving statute that encompasses the use of the phone and is a direct correlation to the accident, the reason that they got into the accident, I could probably go along with it. But I find it perplexing to say that a commercial truck driver gets an exemption, or emergency responders get an exemption, but we don't, we don't have the basic same principles that apply to the, what I think is the common ability for most people to be able to have the same ability to multitask and drive a car. You know, Madam Speaker, I'm not a commercial truck driver, nor am I an emergency responder. So if I wasn't in this hall and I was driving my vehicle down the road using the phone, holding it to my ear, or even using it through the hands-free system, it would be a violation because of basically the studies have shown, what I just heard, that regardless whether you're using it in your hand or you're using it hands-free, it's still the distraction that is the primary cause of the accident, not the fact that you're holding it to your Further, I understand that there's, and then I may have to consult with the author on it and as well as my staff briefly, but talk about full duplex and half duplex, and that basically goes to the cellphone versus a radio usage. So you have your, your one radio system, like the walkie-talkie system, versus a cellphone system, and whether you can use, as I understand it, you can use the walkie-talkie type of system, but you can't use a cellphone. Well, as I was explaining to me some years ago, and maybe the system's changed, maybe the technology's different, but I understand that a cellphone basically is a two-way radio that's constantly open, and so a radio like the traditional walkie-talkie is not always open. But whether I'm talking on a one-way or walkie-talkie always, or the part-time open, part-time not open, or I'm dealing with a cellphone, isn't it the conversation that's a distraction? Based on what I just heard, as well as just common logic? Whether I have to wait for the tweet-tweet and then speak, and then wait for the other person to respond, and I'm holding it up to my ear or my mouth or whatever, isn't the same basic principle? Seems to me it should be. Madam Speaker, as a guy who's been doing public safety along with a fellow 23rd Hurstman back in the back, and a good captain from Chalampago, who's the chair of the Committee on Public Safety, who's been a friend of mine and colleague here in this body, I think we, we may have different viewpoints, we may have a different screen or field of experience to be able to draw from, to make a determination on whether or not to support a bill which would better, safe, or make safe our community. I'm not convinced that this is the bill that does that. As a matter of fact, I think if I go back to the original sentence which I gave and offered in the beginning, which talks about distracted driving, that's something I could definitely go along with because we enclosed or encapsulated many of the types of distracted drivings which cause accidents within our community. I agreed with, and as a matter of fact, reported out, the text bill as a violation in Speaker Pinkel, God rest his soul, who moved in the last term, because I was convinced in that particular case, with the experience that I've had as well in law enforcement as well as being a citizen of this community for many, many years, that that was one thing that by and large, the evidence is overwhelmingly in supportive. In this particular case, I'm not convinced, and I think the distracted driving as a general definition of a violation of the Title 16 by enhancing the ability of law enforcement to in fact find a violation, if someone commits a violation of the Title 16, gets into an accident, and is compelled to issue a citation on distracted driving, I could go along with. I don't think that this bill is one that I can concur with, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak on it.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Senator Palacios on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill, what is this bill? Bill 255 substituted. Madam Speaker, this bill attempts to find a balance between public safety and public convenience, and those that, that seem to favor public convenience for public safety does the prerogative. But I believe that a person who wanted to use cellphone can pull over or can have a safe place to do that. It is convenient, of course, sometimes I myself personally found myself almost in an accident because I was distracted, and I admit that, and it would be inconvenient for me if I were to pull over and then use the cellphone to make my communication. Understand that at the same time, of course, when we use the cellphone while driving, it sort of increases our efficiency in that we will be able to continue to function and do work, maybe call the office or so forth, and at the same time, driving and get to your destination, so you get to do two things simultaneously. But then sometimes it is at the cost of public safety, and in my opinion, it is irrefutable that a person driving and talking at the same time is distracted to some degree. How intense that degree is, I guess it depends on the subject matter at the moment. So it is a matter of balancing, again, public safety and public convenience, and definitely, texting, which is on page three, like line 20 on page three, I mean, again, nobody can provide a good challenge that reading, or writing, or sending electronic devices, which is texting, is not unsafe. It is unsafe. So in the interest of public safety, over a little sacrifice and public inconvenience, I support this bill because this bill, I believe, provides the proper balance. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Spoudon, you recognize on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, previous speakers have basically said, well, I don't know about this bill, you know, there's no real harm, and I mean, and to paraphrase almost, it's like, well, it's the conversation, it's not so much the device, and whatnot, whatnot. Well, let me just say at the very beginning, I rise in support of this bill. I think we can look at the statistics, we can talk about it all day long, but I think anybody who has driven on these roads have seen near accidents merely because somebody else, or that person was on a cellphone, they weren't paying attention. Another speaker said, well, it's really the substance of the conversation that can be the distraction, and maybe so. I mean, whether you're sitting next to a person who's trying to get into an argument with you definitely will be a distraction, but there was also a distraction actually holding something in your hand when it really requires two hands to drive. And of course, you know that some people who drive also hold a cigarette in the other hand. So now you got people driving with a cigarette one hand, a cellphone in the other, at least propped up against their shoulder like this, trying to pretend that they're doing and paying attention to the road. Let's get real, we've seen too many near accidents, and I've been in those near situations where it's like, holy smoke, what happened? What was this person thinking? Cutting in front of me or swerving right into my, into my lane just to find out that they have a phone plugged into their ear, maybe with, propped up like this, holding their thing and having a cigarette in the other, and then every once in a while, you see them take their hand off the wheel, pick up a coffee cup and drink. It's like, holy smoke, how much multitasking do we need to have when you're driving a car? This is a very small line. I think we all can recall the days when there were no cell phones. If you needed to make a phone call, you went to a place that had a phone and you made the call, because it was important enough. A lot of times now, I think we justify the phone calls as important when really they're just trivial conversations. What could not wait for five minutes till you get there to a place where you could actually make a phone call, right? That it's so important that you, you had to take that call right then and there. I've been in situations where, yes, people have called me on the phone, and I'd say, listen, I'm in the middle of traffic right now and I really don't want to have this conversation, let me pull over. And to me, that was important enough to pull over, to take that call, to return that call. That perhaps is something that we should probably be more conscientious of in terms our responsibility, our civic responsibility, to be safer on the road. There's nothing that prevents us from doing that. Also, I'd like to make sure that my colleagues fully understand that this is not groundbreaking legislation. The last time I was in Hawaii, my brother picked me up at the airport, and the phone rang while we were, while we were driving, and I looked at him and said, aren't you going to pick that up? And he says, no, we now have a law that basically mirrors something like this, or we mirror them in terms of it is now illegal to use a handheld device while driving on the roads in Hawaii. So this is not something that's going to be relative only to Guam, and then everybody in the United States is practicing something different. This is actually the norm, I think, that people, that lawmakers across the country in various jurisdictions are looking at to see how they can improve the safety on the roads. The question is, do we want to be at the forefront of this with those states and those jurisdictions who have now passed legislation that would ban using the cell phones in their vehicles while it's moving, or do we want to be at the tail end? I say that in name of public safety, and again, we're not talking about driving distances that require us to wait for an hour before we can get to a phone, or before we can pull over to make that call that we deem important, we're talking about driving time on this island from anywhere to anywhere, really at the maximum, if you're driving from Ritz to Jigo, probably a 45 minutes to an hour max, but most of us drive within a limited area, within a scope of probably three to five miles, that we can get there within seven to 15 minutes. And if the call is really necessary, there is nothing that prevents us to pull over to take that call. I'm in support of this legislation. This is just common sense. I mean, we can try to justify and analyze this thing to death, and we could definitely do it, as anything, as all of the legislation, we could always take the position, well, let's analyze this, and then go point by point by point by point, just find out what's wrong, pull up all the statistics to show that perhaps this and that, this and that, and analyze it till this bill, till the concept all of a sudden dies. But in reality, it comes down to common sense, especially in this term. This is a simple thing that I think we all witness, day in, day out, that a lot of times you do see imprudent driving only because somebody is not paying attention to the road ahead of them, and the car's on the street because they're too involved with trying to press their buttons on their cellphone, with trying to balance their phone whether in their hand or on their shoulder while they're driving and doing something else. So to me, this makes sense, and I support this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Spoudon. Senator Tina Rose Munya-Barnes on the motion.
Mrs. Massey, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this bill, Number 255 substituted by the committee. Madam Speaker, I just want to say that it wasn't too long ago when I was on the radio talking about another bill that had some controversy, when it had to, when it dealt with the utilizations of our roads here on Guam, and it talked about the use of safety, use of a helmet while you're riding a motorcycle, and as controversial as that got, the topic of conversation that came up was, well, if you think that using a helmet will be safer for the motorcycle riders, what about you putting legislation in to support those using the phones while driving on the roads here on Guam? And I said to the radio announcer, which was on K-57, Ray, and I said, Ray, believe it or not, I'm working closely with my colleague in the Democratic Party, the good senator from Manila, Senator Ada, in reference to this, but I do know that there may be some concerns regarding the emergency vehicles and the utilizations of them using hand radios and walkie-talkies and what have you. And I said, but yeah, I'll put my name on it. And immediately, as soon as I got down, I spoke to one of Senator Ada's committee members, and I said, you know what? The only concern that was brought up, at least for me, was making sure that, that those who are in the ambulances- who are in the ambulances and police cars or law enforcement vehicles have that opportunity to be able to get information to and from when they're on the road." And I told myself, I said, "No, I'm not afraid. I'm not afraid to make sure that when we are given the privilege to drive on the road, that it is the government of Guam's responsibility, our responsibility as an august body, to make sure that those who use the roads are protected to those who are on the road that may be violating." And I said, "And if this is a deterrent, if this is an obstacle, then yeah, I'll put my name on it." And I really mean that sincerely, Madam Speaker. I will be the first to admit publicly that I used the phone on the, when I was driving in the car, and I, to admit that I've seen other folks in the car, I mean, not just as the good speaker from Timouning talked about using the hand, I mean, putting their cell on their shoulder and their ear, trying to drink coffee, trying to drive at the same time, and even trying to put makeup on. I was saying, "Oh, my God, what are we coming to?" Or literally taking the, seeing how acrobatic they are, and taking their legs and leaning it up to the tilt of the steering, and using that as a mechanism to saying, "God, I can multitask." And I said, "You know what? I'd be the first to say that I'll stand in support of making sure that if we need to protect the other drivers and ourselves from doing any wrong, then I'm going to do it." The same way, I note it as I believe in my heart, and I've said, we can go through the scientific debate on what's good with helmets and what's not good, but when it comes to this matter, the government of Guam gave the people of Guam the opportunity to ride on, I mean, to drive on those roads. It is our responsibility to make sure that when we drive on those roads, that our full focus is to be driving and nothing else. So Madam Speaker, I stand and rise in full support of this bill, 255, and I want to thank the author of the legislation for making me his second primary sponsor to this bill because I think it's an important bill. And you know what? Even if, as I admit myself of doing that multitasking in the car, I know what's wrong. And I should be able to stand here just saying, "Yes, I'm going to do," because two wrongs don't make a right. But I'm going to stand here and say, "You know what? We've got to make it safe for everybody who drives on that road." And I want to state for the record again, Madam Speaker, that it is not a right for anybody to get on that road. It's a privilege to have a driver's license. It's a privilege that you are to be able to drive safe on that road, and we need to be able to protect the safety protocols that need to be when you're driving on that road. So I support this bill, and I want to thank Senator Adda for giving me the opportunity to be a part of this sponsorship. And I asked my sponsors who are leery about this to literally reconsider this bill because it is for the safety of all the drivers who drive on this road. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Tina Munia Barnes. Are there any other speakers? There being none, then I would call on the primary sponsor then to close.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much. And I, as I listen to the speakers who certainly have their concerns about the bill, I would like to just briefly respond to some of those, and I guess give my rebuttal to that. One is the question of, "Well, then, if the, if what contributes to the distracted driving is the conversations that take place, then should we disallow everyone who's riding in the car from talking in the car?" Some people may even argue that, you know, turning around to say, "Hey, kids, quiet down," that's also distracted driving. And, you know, the, again, the studies that were conducted have shown that, yes, there is some distraction to some extent when you're carrying on a conversation with somebody in the front seat, but they found that certainly the, how much distraction that contributes to the driving in comparison to the intensity of the conversations on a cellphone and all that certainly does not measure up to the use of cellphones. The question was asked, "Well, if the increasing number of cellphone subscribers is growing, has the number of traffic accidents also, as a result of using cellphones, increased?" And the answer to that is, we really don't know because GPD doesn't collect those statistics. And so they, you will not be able to find statistics that would show that this particular accident was as a result of a cellphone in the hem. The remark was made that it's an insult to say that truck drivers can safely talk on a phone while driving, and us who drive a regular car are not able to do so. And again, the difference is that when we talk about not just truck drivers, but commercial drivers who are using a half duplex where you cannot carry on a normal two-way conversation, it's got to be only one person speaking at a time. So then, if we prohibit that, then you're going to have situations like, what do we do then with that security patrol that's going around the neighborhood and is reporting into his dispatch, you know? You need to send backup here because it appears that, you know, he can't do that while he's roving. That seems impractical. It seems impractical that you're totally now going to really kind of cripple the flow of commerce because now you've disconnected that truck driver from his dispatch headquarters who's saying, you know, "Truck number one, we want you to change your route, go up through Route 8 because Route 1 has been blocked off." I don't think we want to do that. It's impractical. There's the remark that was made, "Well, you know, maybe this is kind of like being pregnant versus half-pregnant. It's okay, you have to require everyone inside the cab of a pickup truck to be belted in. If there's children in there, they've got to sit, they've got to be secured in a child-restraint seat, but it's okay to let six people ride seated on the bed of the truck without any seat belts on. It's okay." And so I guess that was the comparison of being pregnant versus half-pregnant. And I guess the difference is that I feel that when we make policies, we can, you know, life is not so black and white. Let's face it, we know that, for example, on Guam, pickup trucks is a primary means of transportation for many families. So now, do we restrict them from being able to transport their families, at least in a somewhat safer manner than we have right now? Do we continue then to just say, "Well, that's a half-pregnant policy, so we should go ahead and continue to, you know, don't worry about the seat belts," and continue to have pickup trucks loaded down with 20 Chinese laborers going to their job sites? And I guess where I'm trying to strike here is, as was mentioned by one of my colleagues, that issue of public safety versus public convenience, and, you know, we don't, we don't want it, we can't be absolute about it. Now, the issue was raised about, you know, statistics were raised here from the national studies, and maybe I shouldn't have, maybe I should, maybe I shouldn't have just left it. Maybe we should all stop and think about the behavior that we ourselves have actually done out there on the road. And I guess I realize that from my own driving behavior out there, where I tried to multitask, tried to drive, tried to dial a number, and found myself swerving in the other lane, I don't need traffic statistics or studies to tell me that that was an unsafe act. Now, if I'm the only one that is unable to drive and dial my phone, or carry on an intense conversation and not get distracted, then I must be the Lone Ranger out there, and everybody else who thinks they can drive safely can do so. But I don't think that is the case. And I think we really just got to bring it down home because we know that we have done it before while we've been driving, and it is unsafe. We somehow feel that as soon as we get in our car, the first thing we want to do is pick up the phone. And have to, there's this need to feel connected. And what are normally the telephone calls? "Hon, I'm on my way home now." I guess hoping that dinner would be ready by the time I get home. Maybe if I did a little bit of better prior planning before I left the parking lot, I could have dialed and said, "I'm heading home now, I'll be home in 15 minutes, do you want me to pick up anything or not?" But no, we have this need to be connected, and the phone, the car's got to be moving before that impulse hits us to pick up the phone. I think it's very true that we're probably no more than 15, 20 minutes away from our destination. My gosh, if the world's going to fall apart in that 15 minutes, then we've got bigger problems to worry about. The final thing I want to say is that in many of the states that have enacted this prohibition against cellphone use, many of them have done so in reaction to traffic fatalities that they have experienced in that state. Is that what we want to do? We want to wait until we have gotten one traffic fatality because now we can pinpoint that that guy drove, that guy got into a fatal car accident because he was using the phone, disregarding all the other studies and all the other suggestions that in fact, the use of cellphones while driving is a significant contributor to distracted driving. Madam Speaker, I urge my colleagues to support this bill and to support increasing and improving safety on our traffic, on our highways. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Speaker, there is, if I may, there is one, it's really kind of a technical amendment. And that is on page four, on line 16 there, it states that the exemptions, remember that there's exemptions that's allowed to use your hands-free device. And it reads there, "The exemptions outlined in subsection C1 above," which is on line four, "shall not apply to an individual who does not possess a valid driver's license." In essence, the person who has only a learner's permit. And what that, what that, what that does is, it's saying that the person with a learner's permit cannot make a call to 911 because they are prohibited from doing so, and that's not the intent. Anybody should be able to make a call to 911 when the event arises. So really, on line 16, that should be, "The exemptions outlined in subsections C point II, double I, through C point I, C point four of this section shall not apply." So that's, it's, I think it's more of a technical, well, I guess it's a substantive amendment in that we're saying that anybody can make that 911 call. So I move that that amendment be accepted, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, are there any objections? Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand.
Can we take, you want to take a brief recess? Because I see Senator, the vice speaker also there asking some kind of questions.
Yeah, I want to speak on, I just don't understand, you know, what the amendment was trying to do. I didn't understand the original, I know I wasn't that concerned because I was going to vote no, but, you know, maybe I'll vote yes, and so maybe now I need to be concerned. But they, what this does is, well, I guess I was trying to follow it, and so the amendment would now say restrictions to everybody. So anybody can use the phone if you're going to call 911. That's why I didn't, I didn't understand the reference to a driver's license with regards to the operation of a motor vehicle. I think even if you're an unlicensed driver, if, you know, you happen to steal a car and you want to call 911 because you see an accident on the cellphone, I think you should be able to call it. So it doesn't really matter, you know, if you're going to be a good Samaritan after, you know, getting in a car without a driver's license and you're concerned, then you should, nothing should prevent you from wanting to dial 911. You know, you're afraid you're going to dial 911 because you're going to get pulled over, they're going to find out you stole the car, and so forth. So you really should be, shouldn't have no fear at all. If you see an accident, you want to dial 911, it doesn't matter whether you have a driver's license or not, or your car or not, you really shouldn't be penalized for using a cellphone now in addition to stealing the car. So that's, that's why I guess I'm just trying to get that, that reference to a driver's license cleared up in my mind so that there's no impediment from anybody becoming a good Samaritan and using the telephone to call 911, no matter what your status is when you're operating that motor vehicle. We want to leave that open and not have to worry about getting an extra ticket or something because they happen to pull you over, or an expired driver's license even, things like that. So maybe that, and I'm hoping that that's what the amendment does, and I'm sure that when they close, that it'll clarify that to ensure that, again, there's no impediment from anyone, no matter what their status is, if they're behind a wheel, from using that phone to call 911. Thank you.
Senator Adda?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No, the amendment actually addresses the speaker's concern, the preceding speaker's concern. Let me just clarify that the bill allows for hands-free driving, talking on the cellphone that's hands-free, but it does not give that exemption to those who are, still have a learner's permit. So let's say, for example, the, it's a student driver, and yes, he does have a fully licensed instructor sitting next to him who may allow him to go ahead and answer a phone call on his Bluetooth. Well, Bill 255 does not allow that student driver to be able to be driving using the hand, in the hands-free mode. But if, but what we want to do, if you take a look at subsection C, it does give certain exemptions, and one of the exemptions is that the person is making an emergency call. So we're saying, you know, regardless, what the amendment that I made was to say that a person who's a student driver, if he needs to make a 911 call, should be able to do that regardless of his license status. The question was asked earlier, "Well, there's a licensed driver there that's, you know, well, what if the guy had a heart attack?" The licensed driver next to him and that student driver, so it's kind of an extreme, and all it's doing is just cleaning up that language which removes the restriction, that particular, you know, any restrictions, and it allows everyone to be able to make a 911 call. That's the effect of my amendment. So if you, again, if you read line 16, paragraph D, says, "The exemptions outlined in the paragraph above does not apply to a person who does not possess a valid driver's license. For purposes of this section, a learner's permit or an intermediate license shall not constitute a driver's license." So, you know, I just, I ask that, just take a look at that closely, and really what it's doing is it's saying, regardless of whether you're fully licensed, a driver's permit, whatever, if you need to make a 911 call, make it.
Any objections to the amendment? Hearing none. Are there any other speakers? Did Speaker Juan Pat wish to speak on this? Any other? Any other speakers wish to speak on the bill?
Yes.
I, I guess, I just, when she asked me to replace her, I thought maybe she was going to. All right. On the bill, did, I understand there was an objection?
Mr. Speaker, my objection actually failed to follow procedure in that it goes back to committee, so I will pull my objection back. And it was a process in which I objected was not going to this body, so I will just refrain.
All right, thank you. On the bill moving, being placed, do you wish to make the motion down to third, to voting file?
Mr. Speaker, I move that Bill 255 be moved to the voting file.
Any objection? Hearing none. The next bill on the agenda, 272. Is Senator Aragon in the hall? Is Senator Aragon in the hall? 275 is also Senator Aragon, so we'll go to 277.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move first to place Bill 277 dash 30 as introduced to third reading. I'd like to make a short remarks on it.
Any objections? There being none. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I will be brief. This bill is an act to allow individuals within the government of Guam to be provided administrative leave for donations of blood. This bill is so brief that the best way to describe it is to read it. "Any employee of the government of Guam shall be granted administrative leave for the purposes of donating blood. The amount of administrative leave shall be as follows: two hours administrative leave for donation of whole bullet, three hours administrative leave for donation of platelets, and two hours administrative leave for blood donor screening. Additional leave may be granted in the event that the clinic receiving the donation of blood determines that more time is necessary for the donor to recover. The approving authority may be, excuse me, may require up to five days' notice from the donor of the date of the blood donation. And further, it says that nothing herein shall limit the ability of the approving authority and the donor from coordinating schedules of donation dates and times to accommodate the operation of the agency. And finally, any clinics shall provide certification of the dates and times of the employee's donation." Mr. Speaker, the incidence or the frequency by which a government employee can provide blood is very limited. Two months and then three months, depending on the type of blood they're providing. We know that the blood is vital to life. The ability to provide blood and the employee to receive administrative leave where he is essentially going to provide lifesaving nutrients to an individual who ultimately needs that blood or platelets is critical, I think, to many communities. And of course, Guam does not have the ability to do its own screening of blood, so platelets actually are preferred because the cost for bringing in blood is cheaper than taking blood, sending it off, getting it screened and cleaned, and then returning it to Guam. This ability for our government employees to provide blood will probably make the difference in a number of different people's lives. And I think that it's essential for us as a government to demonstrate that we too are in sync with our community in being able to provide that lifesaving blood for many people who need it within our medical care facilities, Guam Memorial Hospital and other clinics and other surgery operations who need this blood. So I ask my colleagues for their support. It's a very basic bill. We will not see an exodus of government employment as a result of it in the sense that we're going to have people on leave all the time because they're providing blood because there's a very, it's a very short timeframe from which an individual can provide this blood based on the scientific study that has been conducted on this area. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and I appreciate the colleagues pulling it on the second reading. This is Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenoyan. Senator Palacios. Anybody else wish to speak on the bill?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 277. I guess, Mr. Speaker, of course, it's a noble gesture of anyone to go and donate and give, I guess, lifesaving blood to individuals that need it. But it's only fair, Mr. Speaker, that those individuals who volunteer their time and not only to go there and to voluntarily donate blood, that they be given administrative leave for that purpose. And there is here the, I guess, the mechanism that will provide that. This is, of course, documented and recorded so that it does not, it is not abuse. It provides, of course, for an advance notice to the employer at least five days that the individual is planning to donate blood to the hospital. And at the same time, of course, the clinic is hereby required to provide certification. So there is a sufficient checks and balance here so that this program can be a good program. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Telo Tadeguy.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a point of information, I just wanted to make a correction on the committee report. It reflects that Dr. Friedman was not in favor, and this is not so. If you look at his testimony further down, he is in full support, strongly supports this bill, and I just wanted the correction to be noted in the committee report. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Tadeguy, for that correction. It's, we'll instruct the committee to make that amendment to the committee report. Any other senators wish to be heard on Bill 277? I see none. There's a motion by Senator Tenoyan to move it down. Any objection? Did we find Senator Aragon?
Speaker, can I move for a?
Senator Majority Leader.
Can I just move for a one-minute recess?
Please.
Till we figure out which bill's next. Thank you very much, Ms. Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, and this is a general motion that's been adopted, it appears that Bill 92 is ready for our discussion, and I'd like just a brief opportunity to explain the version to which this body is going to, going to hear. And so since we're on Bill 92, given that motion that once the author is prepared, that's where able to have the discussion on Bill 92 before Senator Guthers is recognized to make the appropriate motions, Mr. Speaker. If you look at a memorandum dated, the copy has just been passed out. If you look at a memorandum to Senator Palacios from myself dated February 22nd, it explains that the version that's going before us is the, is actually the original version, the version as originally introduced. And then when that version hit the floor, there was an attempt to substitute that version, but that attempt failed. And so the author tried to move these amendments one by one. And so at the course of that discussions, there's been some revelation that the version as introduced was not properly formatted. And so when Senator Palacios took over this committee as interim chair, he had subsequent markup hearings of this bill and made a request to me that the substituted version by his committee actually reflects the version as introduced although it's properly formatted this time. And so this is the version that Senator Guthers is going to present to the body and the motion to accept this version as, as described as. And if you look at the bill, Mr. Speaker, it's going to be as resubstituted by the Committee on Labor, the Public Structure, Public Libraries and Technology, parentheses, February 17, 2010, close parentheses. However, if this bill passes and it would be engrossed, then the clerk would take out the word "resubstituted" because there's no such thing. But for purposes of following along, this is what, this is the version that, yeah. It's the original version, just properly formatted after it's been thoroughly vetted by the interim chair and the sponsor of this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Respechio. Senator Guthers as the main sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to move Bill 92 down to third reading for discussion purposes. I mean, to accept the bill for discussion purposes.
Any objection? Hearing no objection. The motion to accept the further substituted version is approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker and colleagues.
Do you wish to make the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion now to move the bill down to third reading for discussion. Yes, the bill is, Bill 92, an act as resubmitted by the Committee on Labor, as resubstituted by the Committee on Labor, the Public Structure, Public Libraries and Technology, February 17, 2010. An act to restore certain jurisdictions and clarify certain functions of the Civil Service Commission by repealing and reenacting Title IV GCA Sections 4403, 4408, 4409, and 5105, sub-Items B and C of Title IV GCA Sections 4405, and new Section 4410 and 4411. Thank you.
Do, is there an objection? Hearing none. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. Bill 92 seeks to restore the jurisdiction of the Civil Service Commission and attempts to clarify certain functions of the Civil Service Commission. This is necessary and will improve the merit system and better fulfill the requirements of Section 1422(c) of the Organic Act, which states that the legislature shall establish a merit system, and as far as practicable, appointments and promotions shall be made in accordance with such merit system. The government of Guam, made by law, established a civil service commission to administer the merit system. Public Law 28 that 68 transferred or repealed most of the non-adjudicary functions of the Civil Service Commission, or transferred certain functions to the Director of the Department of Administration. Public Law 2868 also caused confusion specifically with regard to investigations performed by the Civil Service Commission, those considered adjudicary or non-adjudicary. This has resulted in whistleblower complaints and furlough appeals remaining in limbo. As well, other check and balance functions once performed by the Civil Service Commission were eliminated by Public Law 28 that 68, and really have resulted in the lack of uniformity in the application of the merit system and some questionable employment practices, which were discovered through some post-audit reviews and the full, null, and void authority of the commission. Several Gov.-Guam departments, including the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Guam Power Authority, and the Guam Waterworks Authority, have expressed their desire for the Civil Service Commission to have the jurisdiction to hear certain appeals of their employees. Bill 92 seeks the restoration of the Civil Service Commission to the extent necessary to administer the merit system and to eliminate the strict demarcation of adjudicary versus non-adjudicary functions imposed by Public Law 2868 and other laws. Before you, it was a copy of Bill 92 as resubmitted by the committee, dated February 17, 2010. Colleagues, today we have Naomi Lujan Gonzalez, Roland Faron, and Mr. Ruffo Lujan, who are available to participate and to respond to any questions that you may have if you decide to go into the committee of the halls. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Any senators wish to be heard on the bill?
I just move it go down to the third reading, Mr. Speaker.
To the voting file.
To the voting file. Thank you.
Any objection to it being moved to the voting file? We'll take a recess.
Ms. Speaker, the next bill on the agenda that the committee report's been filed for is Bill 201. As the main sponsor of Bill 201, I move that Bill 201-30COR substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land be placed in the voting file with some discussion.
Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Ms. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, at the outset, I'd like to thank the good Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, Speaker Pangolinan, for having a hearing on this bill and for recognizing and supporting this bill and for recognizing the need to have this kind of legislation. Bill 201-30 was introduced by myself and Senator Guthers, and I'm hoping to have all other members of the legislature attach their name to support this bill. But primarily, Mr. Speaker, it was introduced in response and to build upon an effort that Senator Barnes tried to do in the previous legislature, to respond to the ability to take advantage of net metering policies. As you know, net metering is also legislation that was fathered by the good Senator from Baragada, former Speaker Pangolinan. And net metering allows residents that if ever they have some kind of alternative energy that they're able to produce from their homes, that if their meter is spinning backwards, then they actually get a credit. And as you know, because of some individuals and how they've designed their, their buildings to house these generators, it needs to be close to the, the meter panels, and so the current code does not allow for that. This Bill 201 would allow for exemptions to yard and area regulations, and its intent is to allow accessory buildings or structures to be located and maintained in any front, side, or rear yard, provided that such buildings or structures are to be used exclusively for purposes relative to connections to island electrical power, and to include standby generators and other alternative power connections for net metering purposes, and to provide that such building or structure shall be located at or near the point that electric power is provided by the Guam Power Authority. And if located on a side or rear yard, the walls may be erected on the rear, inner-side lot lines, and such buildings or structures shall not exceed 150 square feet of floor space, and the roofs thereof shall not provide beyond lot lines and shall be sloped in such a manner as to prevent rain runoff from flowing adjacent property. And what's interesting to note, Mr. Speaker, is at this public hearing, there are a lot of real estate agents that attended this hearing to also express concerns in how the current setback requirement prevents their client from actually closing on mortgage loans or getting second mortgages. And so this bill was guided by the Department of Land Management, and the concerns that they expressed at the public hearing have also been incorporated into the substitute version. So in one instance, we want to allow for the maximum use of properties to take advantage of this net metering policy, but we also want to allow for current structures to be conformed so that the banks will not give them any additional problems in closing on any mortgages or second mortgages. And so ask that our colleagues support this bill to stress over and over that it does not only have the support of the Committee of Jurisdiction, but also it has support of the Department of Land Management. And I, I want to thank everyone that's been involved to make this bill much better and address more concerns that we should be addressing. And to close, I ask that Senator Barnes be a third sponsor of this bill. I was going to ask her at the time, but I believe she was off on it, so it's, it's excusable that she's not a co-sponsor of this juncture, but I, I move that she be placed as third sponsor.
Any objection? None. So ordered. Any other senators wish to be heard on this bill?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, I stand in support of the, of the bill as amended. We have many buildings that, you know, families have lived at over the years and, over the years have added, sometimes without real knowledge, of these, what you would call non-conforming buildings or accessory structures that are non-conforming because of setback requirements from side yards and, and other zoning ordinances. And these accessory buildings have at times prevented homeowners from actually selling these, their homes if they decide to upgrade or move to another property because of the fact that they are non-conforming. We have endeavored in this to ensure that those existing structures do not inhibit public health or public safety with regards to where they're at and the ability to access other areas of this, of the property. So for example, you may have an accessory building that encroaches on the side yard setback that would prevent an automobile from going to the backyard or, or some other emergency building, but as long as you leave one side available and accessible, then that non-conforming building can stay and becomes grandfathered into it. So these are some of the issues that have prevented people from utilizing their property. It also allows for some guidance with regards to placing accessory buildings on front yards. It requires certain heights of fences so that whatever's placed there doesn't become urban blight, you might want to call it. So there are requirements for such screening and such in the construction of these accessory buildings. We also wanted to make sure that the construction of these accessory buildings that now are able to abut the property lines do not prevent, do not present any problems for the neighbors so that if you have your accessory building close to the property line, that the drainage on the roof cannot extend or allow the water to run into the other neighbor's property. So these kind of issues have been looked at and addressed to ensure that whatever you do with your property doesn't devalue or, or present any kind of hazard to the neighboring lots within that community. So I think that the bill, and I want to thank the sponsor of the bill for taking a look at some of the issues that have been presented over the years with regards to some of these accessory buildings and ensuring that when we do place these accessory buildings and recognize their existence, that there is an opportunity for the accessory building to remain with certain limitations, and if they don't comply, then they, under these expanded limitations, then we recognize also that they, they will have to be removed. So in that regards, I stand in support of this bill and certainly commend the authors for looking out for the interests of property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Pangolinan. Vice Speaker on the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm not sure if it's an objection that I have to the bill, or maybe if the author would yield to a clarification on this, on this legislation. Since the inception of this bill, I have had concern about the fact that you can, you're allowed to locate a building or a structure between two homes, and the setback requirement is, is waived. Just, I guess I'm one of the few people on island that doesn't have a standby generator because I, I hate the sound of those things. And my drop line is between myself and my neighbor, and our homes are just at the absolute minimum setback requirement between our two houses. If either one of us decided we were going to put a standby generator where our drop lines are located to take advantage of the GPA connection, we would have the, the standby generators sitting on the property line between the two of us, and both of us in building our homes with the, with a setback requirement had to put solid walls on that side to comply with, with, with the setback laws to try to muffle the sound of, of these kinds of noises in, in having neighbors like that. And I'm just concerned that this just throws everything open, and the reason why banks don't want to, to lend to people who, who violate the setback law is because it, it, it affects the value of the home when, when the, when the setback is, is ignored and people put in generator houses next to, next to each other, and you have to tolerate these noises in, in the evenings and throughout the night. And I really have grave concerns about legislating this and, and saying that, yes, it's okay. Never mind all the, the setback requirements, we're, we're going to destroy the values of each other's homes. It may not affect my home because I have my generator, but it'll definitely affect my neighbor's home whose drop line is on the other side of the property because I can put mine between the two of us, but he will put his over, over the ravine because that's where his drop line is at. And I, it would be okay for me because it, it would not affect the value of my home, but it would surely affect the value of the home next to me. And I, I'm just trying to look out for those other people. I mean, I can't just be self-centered in these legislations and figure, well, it's okay for me, but my next door neighbor is just going to have to suffer because I want to have a standby generator and my drop line is, is between my house and, and his bedroom. And I can put it there right up onto, up to the, to the, the boundary line and have him suffer it and, and affect the value of his home. I have real problems with this legislation, the way that it's written, Madam Speaker, and I, unless there's a clarification, I, I-
Senator Respechio?
Some, I have doubts about whether or not I can support it.
Did you wanna, did you want? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main bill? If not, Senator Respechio, you can close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I do, I do appreciate the concerns expressed by the retiring Speaker. And on page three, this bill was very clear to say that the buildings or structures that are going to be used for these standby generators shall not exceed 312 square feet of floor space, and the roofs thereof shall not project beyond the lot lines and shall be sloped in a, in such a manner as to prevent rain runoff from flowing to adjacent property. This bill also says, Madam Speaker, that when such buildings or structures are to be used for standby generators, an exhaust or ventilation to the outside air must be provided, and such accessory buildings shall have an interior height of no less than seven feet, and the overall exterior height of the structure shall be no greater than 10 feet and shall meet building code standards. And so it's not like we're just saying in this legislation that, that if anybody wants to take advantage of net metering, that they can build a structure that's closest to its drop line. This bill still provides these very strict requirements, and because it has to meet the building code standards, then certainly Public Works will be the regulatory agencies to do that. Now, in the case of vehicle shelters, we have a colleague who owns about 15 cars, and this colleague may be concerned about how she can extend her existing home to meet all these different vehicles and take care of her cars. Well, this colleague must still have these vehicle shelters that doesn't, that has to be 15 feet from the front line and maybe zero feet from the property line on only one side. And as the Speaker from Baragada said, the way these houses have been structured and designed over the years, we have to have legislation to kind of recognize these growing changes. And, and you know, granted, this is kind of legislation that will grandfather these things over the years, but at this, at this public hearing, there was a, an individual who testified that said because of the boom years in the 90s, Public Works couldn't keep up with, with the regulatory aspects, and you had all these accessory buildings built up over the years, and now these people have found themselves in a situation where they can't either sell that home or buy a home, or even get a second mortgage on those homes. And, and maybe this is a good time for us to again reflect on what this military buildup will do to our tiny island if we don't have the regulatory agencies outfitted with the resources necessary to monitor these things. But having said that, Madam Speaker, I'm still very hopeful that because these individuals have to meet the building code standards, and I don't own a standby generator, but I certainly know that because of how the generator technology have been improved over the years, they're just as quiet as a car. And so the concern of, I know you're nodding because I think you own a standby generator, but the concern of, of generator being too loud, maybe going to obstruct the, the neighbor's property, somehow there's certain interior height requirements, the, the, the roof has to be sloped inside that person's property so the rain doesn't go off to the neighbor's side. And I, I, I was too very concerned with this legislation, and when you tried to do this last year, I remember having a conversation with you and asking you, what are you trying to do here? But after understanding what the, why it's important that we do this, and the need that has existed because of a situation created over the years, and how there's regulatory aspects designed into this legislation so that we don't see all these obstrusive type accessory buildings popping up all over the place, I'm still very confident that this bill addresses those concerns and that there are still strict standards in place so that we don't have these accessory buildings that are going to be higher than, than the original buildings. And so I, I asked the previous speaker to reconsider. I don't think he's outright objected the bill, but I just asked that he reconsidered the, the comments I made to give him some assurances that this bill will still have the regulatory aspects to, to address his concerns, which is, which should be all of our concerns, which is my concern, which was the Chairman's of Oversight Jurisdiction's concern. That's why we work closely with the Department of Land Management and Public Works to make sure that in, in attempting to solve a problem, we don't create more problems. And so I hope that was explanation enough to add some sense of comfort. So I ask all of our colleagues to support this bill, and I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to close.
Senator Frank Blas, you had your hand raised, but he did his closing. Senator Blas, I will allow you to speak, my brother.
Thanks, sis. And I'll just make a short, simple, and maybe point of inquiry with regards to, on page four. And basically, it provides the, the parameters for which a vehicle shelter can be erected, and it says 15 feet from the front line and maybe zero feet from the property line on one side only. Then he goes on that accessory structures, such as, you will, there must be a minimum of five feet from the front line and maybe zero feet from the rear or side lot line. Why zero feet? My concern here, ma'am, is regards to- My concern here, ma'am, is regards to, as was pointed out by the good author, are we concerned about making sure that we recognize the changes in structures and the accessibility and convenience, but also, my concern here is going back to the accessibility. You have a structure that's zero feet to the property line. What about the accessibility for safety purposes, to be able to go through, pass that line? And so my concern... That's my question, is why zero feet?
Okay. Senator Respechel, would you like to answer Senator Blas's inquiry?
I believe this is limited to zero feet of the property line on one side only. And so we've explained that because of how these structures have evolved over the years, some people have provided a vehicle shelter in one side of their house. Now, if this bill passes, they have a vehicle structure on both sides of the house with a zero-feet property line on both sides, then they'd be non-conforming, and so they would have to make provisions to remove one side. But this only allows for one side of the property.
Senator Blas, does that answer your question?
Well, I'm just trying to envision what the structure would look like on this property. And then zero feet, you know, I just don't want to see a development where, and granted, it's just one side of the property, but you compound that by the number of different properties, you know, in a community that have these structures, you know, zero feet on one side. What are you building, and what do you have there? And so, although I agree, and don't get me wrong, Madam Speaker, I recognize and I agree that there maybe has to be some changes, so that we can take into consideration these structures that because of how design, home designs have changed to be able to be convenient, to accommodate a person, you know, how a person wants to build their house, and though also not wanting to infringe on a person's ability to be able to do what they want on their properties, I'm also concerned, not only of the aesthetics that it could cause to a community if everybody does this, but also safety concerns in as far as an accessibility. And granted, yes, I understand, it's only on one side. I'm just concerned, now, can you just imagine if you had two different properties, both of them have these vehicle structures in the front of their homes, and both of them put it on the same, one is on the left side of their property, and the other's on the right side of their property? Aesthetically, what it would, you know, what it would look like, and then does that have an overall overarching effect in as far as the value of the homes in that whole area, because of the aesthetic looks? So that's the concern that I have there.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Are there any objections to moving this down to the voting file? If not, motion carries. Majority Leader, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The next bill that's available, and copies have just been passed out, is Bill 284-30.
Please proceed.
Senator Pangolino.
Senator Pangolino, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 284-30 LS be placed in the third reading file, and like to discuss it very briefly.
No objections. Please proceed, Speaker Pangolino.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 284-30 would repeal a section of the law, 43119, specifically Chapter 43, Title V, Guam Code annotated, that basically, the general policy proposed by that section was that when the legislature establishes any board or commission, and the governor signs that law, or the proposed legislation as passed by the body, that establishes such a board and commission, and the board and commission never gets impaneled and never meets, then that board or commission is automatically abolished. And this would repeal that and allow the board and commission to stay on the books and to continue to exist until one of two things happen. One, the governor agrees to appoint the members, and it meets. Or two, the author or the body itself decides to make some kind of motion to move forward on the enabling and impaneling of that board and commission. And the reason why I wanted to do this is to restore the checks and balance power between the legislature and the executive branch. Right now, of course, the only way a board or commission can get established, there's two ways. One is, of course, and both requires passage by this body. The first way would be the governor agrees that such a board or commission is needed, and signs it into law, and proceeds with impaneling the board and commission, as he attests and agrees to by his signature. The second way of impaneling the board and commission is the governor vetoes the bill, but the legislature overrides the bill. But the ability of the governor to continue to frustrate then that public policy of establishing that board and commission that the legislature sees fit as being required, gives the governor a second veto over the ability of this body to enact and implement the public policy that is set according to the statutes of the Organic Act as to how these things get put into effect. So in effect, it weighs in favor of the governor, in terms of the governor can continue to veto and frustrate the policy of this government by duly enacted laws, by continually refusing to make the appointments, these commissions don't meet, and therefore they get disestablished. We really could have the same thing happen, for example, if somebody wanted to do it with the Commission on Self-Determination, that the governor refuses to call a meeting, so it never meets, so technically it could be disestablished. And that's not the balance of power that we want to have exist in our government. That weighs the balance of power in favor of the executive, and there's no more checks and balance, because the governor continually refused to make any appointments, even though the policy of this body is that it's needed, we want it, and we believe that it should be put in place. And so this would restore that balance of power between the executive branch and the legislative branch, and it would repeal the automatic abolishment of these boards and commissions if the governor continues to frustrate them by not making these appointments. And so this would ensure that the public policy as enacted by this body, with regards to the establishments of these boards and commissions, and the authorities and responsibilities granted to them, get a fair chance at being implemented according to the requirements of law, and of course, the balance of power envisioned by the Organic Act with regards of the right of this body to override a veto of the governor and put in place duly enacted laws. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I ask my colleagues for their support.
Any other senators wish to be heard on this bill? Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Seeing none, Senator Pangolino, do you just wish to? There's a motion to place it in the voting file. Any objection? No objection, so worded. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to call your attention to Bill 288-30 that's available.
Two what?
288-30.
All right, 288-30. Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to move that Bill 288-30 COR be placed in the third reading file. Like to discuss it very briefly.
Any objection? Hearing none, so worded.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 288 is a bill that was worked with and at the request of the Retirement Fund Board of Trustees, and what it seeks to do is to increase the availability of fixed income securities as investment vehicles by the retirement fund. Right now, most of the fixed income investment vehicles that are permitted to be invested by retirement fund assets by the board are limited to an index of treasury, government-related, and fixed income securities. And it does not allow investments in other fixed income vehicles, such as foreign bonds of foreign companies, as well as corporate bonds of foreign companies. We know that the economy has shifted, I think, in the world, and we're seeing greater participation by foreign companies in the global economy. And so while these companies, we may not be familiar with them, we know that they are some of the biggest companies in the world, and these companies are offering secure and dividend-paying bonds and securities that provide a greater return on investment. And so this bill, again, based upon the advice of the Retirement Board would allow bonds of domestic corporations to be invested by... And we're talking about the defined benefit plan here, because as you recall, the defined contribution plan is a self-directed plan, and it is up to the individual employees to make some investment based upon the presented investment vehicles of that. So this would allow the board itself to increase the ability of investments in greater variety of investment vehicles that would hopefully, and with some good advice and decisions by its investment managers, increase the investment return on the retirement fund's assets, and will allow us to continue to widow away at the unfunded liability of that investment funds. So it's fairly straightforward in terms of the definition of the bonds that will be eligible for investment. It sets criteria for the return on the bonds versus the charges of the bonds in terms of its cost of investing in those vehicles, so that we don't end up getting a 10% return on the bonds, but the charges for investments on that is 7%, we get a net yield of 3. So it allows and sets those parameters with regards to the fixed charges for the companies and the return on those companies. So once again, like I said, this was done in consultation with the advisors of the Retirement Fund Board and the board of the retirement fund, and would like to ask for the body's support of this legislation. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolino. Are there any other senators wish to be heard on Bill 288? I see Senator Titegwe.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I could request for just one minute recess while we review the committee report. It's not online, and I don't have a hard copy of it, and I would really like to have the opportunity to review it, please.
We will take a short recess.
Thank you.
We're back in session. Senator Titegwe.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I would like to ask a question of the author of the bill, if you can. I just have one concern about this.
This is Yoffir Yield.
Oh, the question is, does this bill allow the retirement fund to invest in all government-indexed funds, and/or does it allow the retirement fund to only invest in the government-indexed fund of Barclay Capital? Because the bill's specific to Barclay Capital U.S. Aggregate Bond Index, and I'm concerned because that we are authorizing the retirement to favor a particular investment... because that we are authorizing the retirement to favor a particular investment company, Barclay.
Senator Pangolino.
Thank you very much.
Yildik.
Sure. Barclays creates this index, so we're not investing in Barclays. We're investing in the investment vehicles that make up an index. So, for example, Standard &amp; Poor's 500 Index, the Russell 2000 300 Index, or 3000 Index. You're not investing in Russell, you're investing in the 3,000 companies, small caps, Russell is small caps. You're investing in -- you can invest in any of the 3,000 companies that are part of that index, the S&amp;P 500. You're not investing in Standard &amp; Poor's, you're investing in the 500 companies that meet the criteria to be included in that index. So we're not investing in the Barclay company, we're investing in all of the investment vehicles of fixed income securities that make up and are part of the Barclays index. And that's what index investing is. It's not in specific. If you wanted to diversify your entire risk and just buy the index, you're not buying it from Barclay, you're buying an index that was created by Barclay, and you buy a portion of it so that your dollar is proportionally influenced by all of the index vehicles or all of the bond vehicles in that index. So we're not favoring one company in terms of Barclays, we're allowing the retirement fund to pick and choose all of the companies or the investment vehicles under fixed income criteria that make up that index. So that's what this does. You know, the index has changed, it's gone from Lehman to Barclays because of the merger into that. So it's this index created by this foreign investment vehicles of fixed income that's all graded and so forth, and you're now able to invest in the other investment vehicles that have become a part of that index over the years in terms of its expansion. There used to be, we could say that there used to be no corporate, foreign corporate bonds in that index. Now you have some corporate bonds that are graded and rated that are part of that index, and now you can buy that corporate bond, the retirement fund can. So that's what this does in terms of the expansion of the investment vehicles available to the retirement fund.
Is that satisfactory, Senator Tiede-Gui?
That's very satisfactory, and thank you for the answer. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any other speakers on the bill? Senator Cabo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, I want to congratulate the author of the bill for allowing for flexibility for potential investments in our retirement fund on areas that have not been tapped in or been legal resources for investment in the past. I must state to you that I'm -- as I review this bill and trying to ascertain whether I'm for or against it, I do have some concerns. The concerns have a lot to do with the current situation worldwide, and with this current situation worldwide, whether this is the proper time for allowing more flexibility. And again, no one can predict the future. I do remember when we did pass similar legislation, which I was in favor of in the past, that allowed for the retirement fund to invest in areas that were not considered blue-chipped. Quite coincidentally, it happened at the time, or right before, the collapse of the worldwide financial market. And again, because of the timing, if it had been 10 years earlier, if we had allowed that kind of flexibility, we would have been seeing much more better returns in the investments of the retirement fund. But we allowed for that flexibility in absolutely the wrong time, because it was the exact time where the unforeseeable occurred. I'm torn on this bill. Looking at the flexibility and understanding that we are looking at U.S. dollar-denominated investment grades, focusing on the index, and again, based on the legislative findings and intent on the index that covers Treasury, government-related fixed-rate mortgage-backed securities, agency-fixed rate and hybrid adjustable-rate mortgage pass-throughs, non-governmental-related bonds eligible to be listed on this index include corporate bonds, derivatives, derivative bonds, mortgage-backed securities. Boy, derivatives and mortgage-backed securities. There are some major issues in the world market as a result of those two areas, asset-backed securities, commercial-backed securities. What -- I'm torn because I see the opportunities. We're basically allowing for expanding investments in dollar-denominated, but more now towards looking into the international arena, both in regards to government investment in differing governments, as well as in the non-governmental side, again, in the international arena as well, in different areas that are, again, we have not touched on. Understanding that we are now in a global economy that's interconnected, if you are to look at the current situation of the world finance and the economies of the world, things are still not what you would call stable. There are certain governments now that, and I could call Greece, Ireland, you name it, folks, they're just most recently, you're seeing the viability of certain sovereign governments that are in such a position that whether they to remain in a certain type of economic union, and whether it's the EU or some other type of international economic or political union, because of those treaties and those governments on how they are to deal with their finances, it's causing a lot of major issues right now in regards to how those governments finance their debt and how those governments interrelate with other governments under their political or economic union. This world is changing, and it's changing dramatically. I congratulate the chairman. It allows for flexibility, but now, we are now allowing for a retirement board, and I think that's how it's going to work, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are allowing for the retirement fund to have these vehicles to make certain decisions. Folks, I'm a layman. I'm a simple guy that has a little bit of an understanding of finance, a little bit of understanding of what is happening in the economies of Guam, the United States, a much less understanding of what's happening in the international arena. And in any other situation, I would be, you know, comfortable. It's just that right now, we are in uncomfortable times, and not only in Guam, not only the United States, but the world. And I have a lot of, you know, I know the folks there in the retirement fund, I have a lot of respect for those folks at the board, but there have been some major issues in our retirement fund. And we could, here in the legislature, squawk about sometimes making mistakes in revenue forecasts and then appropriating them, but then also, you take a good look at the returns on the retirement fund and how it's contracted over the past few years, and how $200 million has been wiped out in assets as a result of the insecurity and the instability of the world financial scene, and you see why I'm concerned. Mr. Speaker, maybe in times previous, maybe two years back, I would have said, "No problem, this is a good, it's a tool that we can use to allow for full maximization of our retirement fund and getting the best returns." But I am, I have some severe reservations, reservations not because of the intent of this bill, but obviously reservations as a result of what is going on in the world today, in particular areas that I feel that we are still in a flux. So again, with that, I raise my concerns on this bill, and I'm not too sure exactly where I'm going to move in regards to whether I vote yea or nay to it. But I eagerly anticipate some of the discussions that will occur, and maybe that could assist me in making that decision. Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this matter.
Thank you very much for your contribution, Senator Cabo. Any other senators wish to be heard on this bill? Senator Pangolino, you may close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I certainly echo some of the same wariness, maybe, with regards to when I first looked at this. And I don't want to, you know, I'm probably less of a finance guy than the good retiring chair, because, you know, I don't have a family business, I haven't been involved in business. The only business I've been involved in is the one that I've created and started and continue to operate, so I didn't have this 100-year or 60-year benefit of being in the family business, as understanding that. So I've relied on the experts. By no means did I write this bill. I did take the opportunity to work with the people that have drafted the bill, tried to understand exactly what's being proposed, trying to take a look at what's happened in the past. So I've taken the time to study it, but it's no, by very no means of anybody's imagination nor my own, a product of my writing and so forth. So I've relied on the experts that have been with the retirement fund, and also some of the historical knowledge of what's happened with the investments and where the missed opportunities have been for the retirement fund. When we started on the retirement fund, we were very, very conservative with regards to the investment vehicles, no foreign companies at all, no investments in equities that did not pay any dividends at all. So we could not invest in, for example, Apple Computer back when we first started the -- and we could not today, because Apple still does not pay dividends. Yet it has grown, Apple itself, from 2005, I think, or 2003 to now, has increased in value by over 300%, but it has never paid out a dividend. So under the old investment strategy with the retirement fund, we couldn't take advantage of that. And when we talk about, you know, making those changes, when we made those changes, I'm sorry, but, you know, my memory serves me in the other direction. When we made some of the investment strategy changes in the retirement fund, we've actually sheltered, number one, when the market tanked, our investments in the retirement fund, even though we lost money, we lost less money than 90% of all the other retirement funds in the country. So everybody lost money, nobody made money. Last year, the only state in the Union that increased its budget were two places, one, North Dakota, and two, Guam. We increased our budget by a slight 3% in terms of operating expenses, and North Dakota increased it by about 5% last year. Every other state and jurisdiction in the Union had to cut expenses and raise taxes in order to meet operational requirements in the country. Why? That's the way the economy was at, and yet, two places in the world, in the country, were able to kind of increase that. Maybe now, looking at exactly what's happening today, is it the right thing to do? I think it was okay. I feel comfortable. You know, it's a little early in the game, but we may be wrong, we may be off by 2% to 3% at the end of the fiscal year, we don't know that yet. But to illustrate, the point is, the point is that we've had these economic, you know, problems in the country, everyone's looking at it. Now, what we are doing with this bill is expanding the investment vehicles, but only within the index. We're not going outside the index. The index is the benchmark we use to measure the performance of all of our other investment managers that manage the assets of the retirement fund. So when we're deciding to hire, you know, Goldman Sachs, or we decide to give our investments to Altera Atlanta-Sasnov as the managing company for a portion of the government of Guam's assets, when we take a look and say, "How did they perform? Should we renew our contract as investment managers for this portion of our portfolio?" When we look at their performance, we compare it against this Barclays index and how the index performed. So it's the benchmark for our measurement of the quality of investment services that we're getting from all of our other investment managers. Remember, the retirement fund does not employ one single investment manager to manage the entire portfolio. We carve it out based upon the investment philosophy of these different investment companies. But no matter what their philosophy is, when we compare, when we try to go and judge them for how they perform, we compare it against this index. Yet, the way that the law is set up, there are certain investment vehicles within that index that they cannot buy, because it's just the, when this portion of the enabling statute of the retirement fund was put into place, some of these now investment vehicles that are indexed weren't even created yet. And so what has happened is, you know, new companies fall off, new companies get formed. So over the life of this index, new companies and new investment vehicles have been put in place inside this index, but the way that our statute was written, those new investment vehicles do not qualify. Yet that's how we're measuring the performance of that. So I certainly understand, you know, the hesitancy, and I mean, we'd be foolish if we didn't try to look at those things, and I certainly commend the retiring speaker of, yeah, just let us take a look. I mean, that's, you know, that's the prudent thing to do. That's why the change we made in the investment criteria for judging the board was no longer based on just the statutory authority, but we've expanded it to this prudent man rule in terms of, did they make the best decision, given the best information, given the time they were in when they made their investments decision? And that's how we judge whether or not these individuals who sit on retirement board and make the decisions for the companies that we hire, whether or not they are liable for any of the losses we suffer. If they acted according to the prudent man rule, then they're sheltered from those decisions and the losses that may be affected or affected by the investment vehicles and decisions that they make. So we actually have benefited from the change in some of the investment criteria that we've been able to legislate in this body. When we didn't exceed the gains of other retirement funds across the country, we have lost less money than most of, if not all of them, when everybody else was losing money. It's not a good place to be, but, you know, it kind of, because nobody wants to be on the negative side of the investment. But when -- the negative side of the investment, but when everybody else is drowning in red ink and you get a stain on your shirt pocket, then yeah, maybe, you know, maybe it was a good decision to broaden the investment vehicles that we're at. You know, the good senator just came back from Olongopo, and he had, I was reading some of the, some of the results of his meetings there, and he wanted to learn about the best practices of Olongopo in the expansion of the Subic Bay Free Trade Zone and what they've been able to do there. Well, for example, when Richard Gordon decided that he wanted to ensure that he gets success, where did he turn to in order to attract the investors that will enhance the success of this Subic Bay Free Trade Zone? He went to companies whose corporate bonds are in this index, you know, FedEx, Intel. They actually went and looked at these companies who had the track record of growth as well as return on invested capital, and they said, "That's the kind of company we wanted, and we want to attract those, to put into these and have them make investments in facilities and operations in there." And so FedEx has opened up a huge facility. Now, they've also taken a look and seen how the world economy has changed, and if I remember correctly, FedEx has recently pulled out of Olongopo City or Subic Bay and actually moved some of its facilities there into China itself, just to be closer to the supply chain. It's not that Olongopo wasn't a good place to be, it was because of the changes in the world economy and the world production, they found a better place to be closer to the supply chain. So, yeah, when we look at those things, and yet, that was very, what do you call it, cutting edge at that time on making these kind of decisions, that this is the type of company we wanted. It's not their fault, it's not something that Subic Bay didn't do or failed to do, it's somebody else did something that met their needs a little bit better. Subic Bay is still one of the best places in Far East, I think, in terms of what they've been able to rebuild thereafter to pull out of the military, in terms of a place where you can have good U.S.-educated system personnel, English-speaking, you know, a good port, a good airport. So all of those continue to be there, but again, as my good colleague mentioned, some of the changes that occurred in the world economy has now just caused other people to say, "We've got something better." Well, again, I go back to this. The expansion of this is nothing outside of the index that is being used to measure the success of the investment managers that we hire. It's just that they can now pick of the individual investment vehicles within that index, nothing outside, that may maximize the return, because just as if you buy the S and P 500 or the Dow Jones Industrial Averages, you can have the gain that is averaged out by all of the member companies in that index, but if you bought Apple, you know, you'd get a 300 percent return, whereas if you bought the index, you'd get a 50 percent return. So this allows the company to buy Apple and other specific investment vehicles or corporation bonds and so forth, and this is fixed income, so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. But it is that, it is those investment vehicles that are part of a fixed income structure that are allowed to be individually invested in, but all remaining within this rated, graded, fairly conservative index, and allowing our investment managers to make those decisions and be able to buy any of those companies within the index or any of those investment vehicles within the index. And I ask, maybe this is the one where you need a leap of faith, but I feel pretty comfortable, I feel very comfortable actually with the recommendation that came down from the investment, because we have our investment managers and we have our investment advisor. Our investment advisor takes a look at some of these kind of issues and makes the recommendations so that we can provide some greater resources to the investment managers to do what they promise us they can do when we hire them, and that we can then make our judgments by giving them the ability to expand their investments to all of the instruments within that index. So I hope that gives some comfort, but I would not blame anyone at all if they decided that they're just not comfortable enough to make this change at this time, that there's no blame to be placed on that. It is something that everyone is going to have to kind of rely on some gut feeling as well as some background research and reading to feel that they have enough of a grasp of what this does in order to make a decision. And I know everyone will make their decision, and I hope that between now and the time we vote, we all can Google and look on the Internet and expand our research ourselves and then make the best decision we can. But I certainly feel very comfortable in voting yes on this, and ask my colleagues to do the same. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Any objections to moving it down? Hearing none. Senator, Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we recess till 2 o'clock, at which time we would resume discussions on Bill 245-30.
We stand in recess until 2 o'clock this afternoon. Thank you.
Let's just back in session, and the new bill to be heard this afternoon will be Bill Number 245, and the primary sponsor is Senator Calvo. You're recognized on your bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move, I'm not too sure if it's already been accepted, but I'll make the motion to accept Bill 245-30 as substituted by the committee, and then, of course, I'll further move if that's in order to place in the third reading.
On that motion and without any objections, ordered.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Again, I made the second motion also to place into the third reading, Bill Number 245-30 as substituted. Madam Speaker, again, it's a simple bill. What this bill intends to do is to give a name to a complex of baseball fields that are now being constructed and nearly completed in an area that encompasses a little bit behind the Dedido Gymnasium on the way towards the Robbie Weber Soccer Field. And if any one of you have noticed, there's, this complex entails about four baseball fields configured in a manner in which it makes a square pattern. This complex, again, was a project that was undertaken by a good friend of mine and a longtime employee of the Department of Parks and Recreation, Greg Andrew Montanani. Mr. Montanani had been working for many, many years in moving forward in this project, and he was, again, about ready to see the fruition of all his work, when unfortunately, again, he made, he had an untimely death. And this field is named, this complex would be named in his honor. Madam Speaker, I want to talk a little bit about Mr. Montanani. I've known the gentleman long before I was in public office. I have six children, and my two oldest boys, Eddie and Vince, when they were young kids, played in a lot of sports, in particular, Little League Baseball. And the first time I actually met Mr. Montanani was when I was a fan as a father, as well as a third base coach for the San Jose Pepsi Giants, and Mr. Montanani also was a coach and a fan and a father of, again, with kids playing for the Manila teams, and we've had an opportunity to meet each other as coaches and as parents and as fathers who just very much love to participate in sports with their kids. Mr. Montanani was a man that did a great job at Parks and Rec, and he focused much of his attention on ensuring that there are quality health, sporting facilities for our young people. In his spare time, he was a coach and managed baseball teams for many years, and then, of course, full-time, he was one heck of a great father. I mean, I really believe he is one role model that many parents should look to when it comes to being a father, a public servant, and one who gives back to the community. And I see no other accolade that would be more fitting than to name this field, which would have been one of his crowning achievements after him. So again, Madam Speaker and my dear colleagues, I rise and I ask for your support in, again, naming these new facilities, these baseball fields situated within the Dedido Sports Complex, the Gregory Greg Andrew Montanani Memorial Baseball Fields. And again, I'm asking for your vote and your support in the passage of this legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of this effort to be able to name the complex that's currently being constructed as the Gregory Andrew Montanani Memorial Baseball Fields. But with that, Madam Speaker, you know, in discussions during the public hearing, as well as the discussions that we had outside of these halls, of the desire to be able to memorialize Greg, I too have had the pleasure of knowing for many, many years. One thing that I knew that Greg is, outside of his employment at the Department of Parks and Recreation, he was a coach. His love for baseball and his love to teach kids, boys and girls, how to play the game that he so very loved. And I think it's only fitting that we give, that we also, in the name, the Gregory Greg Andrew Montanani Memorial Fields, is that we acknowledge his title, that most kids knew him as coach. And so I propose an amendment, Madam Speaker, that it would, to put the word, both in the title and throughout the document, before Gregory, is put the word "coach." So it is Coach Gregory Greg Andrew Montanani Memorial Baseball Fields. Insert the word "coach" in front of Gregory. That's the amendment.
One moment, can you please repeat the amendment?
It's to insert the word, put the word "coach" in front of Gregory Greg Andrew Montanani. So it's now, it says "Coach," the Coach Gregory Greg Andrew Montanani Memorial Baseball Fields, and every reference that it has to.
Okay, on the amendment, without then any objections? Yeah, okay, one moment, that's on page, the first page, line four.
And wherever.
The beginning at least, line four, the, in front of Gregory, we'll put the "coach", and then thereafter, all of the corrections will be made.
Yeah.
Indicating that "coach."
Coach.
Putting the word "coach." Are there any objections? As substituted by the committee. Can we take a minute recess then? Can we take a minute recess then?
But again, knowing that Greg played a major part of that, even as a little kid himself, being an avid baseball player. And wanting to see this dream come true, I think truly in spirit, Madam Speaker, that if he were alive today, he'd be really proud that the fields are up and coming, that they should be done before the end of the year. And knowing that this dream would really have become a reality, he would have been really, really, really proud. And again, I stand in full support of this bill. I'm hoping that the author of the legislation will make me a part of this sponsorship as I support its efforts. So I'm asking if the good author can make me a sponsor of this bill. Senator Cavill?
I'd be honored to have you as a co-sponsor. Again, someone who's been so involved in sports for so many years, so I would have no objection to... I'd like to move to...
I'm making a motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to move to have our esteemed secretary of the legislature as a co-sponsor to this legislation.
On that motion then, without any objections, so order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I really want to thank the good author for including me in that sponsorship. And I ask my colleagues to support the same, as this is really, just acknowledges again one of our local residents who had the love and passion for baseball, who's not with us physically, but is, will always be with us in spirit and in heart. I think this is a good tribute to him, so thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Tai Tukui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too stand in full support of this bill. Greg and I grew up together, kind of, per se, he was a couple of years older than I was in GW High School. And I meet up with his children every once in a while out there since his passing. And this would give them the continued legacy that his father had put forth to the community. And every time they speak of their father, it brings tears to their eyes. And to honor him in this way just brings joy, comfort, and especially to his wife as well. And since we're all contributing to this, I too would ask the good author if I, as well, can be a sponsor of this bill as well, if he would include me.
With all these lovely ladies, I have no objection whatsoever. The more the...
I...
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 The legislature's back in session. Senator Blas, I know that you were conferring with our colleagues on the amendment.
Yes, thank you Madam Speaker. I have to confer with my colleagues. I think that it was best, I'll go ahead and retract that amendment, but then also to restate the amendment, it would show that it would be the Gregory, and then in the quotation marks, it would be Coach Greg. So it would be the Gregory Coach Greg Andrew Matanani Memorial Baseball Fields.
Okay, and then throughout the bill, the same thing to make the changes. So there are no objections, and so ordered. Thank you very much. Are there anyone who would like to speak on Bill 245 as substituted and further amended on the floor? Our simplest bills are always the one that takes up so much time.
I'll speak on it, I'll speak on it.
Okay, Senator Barnes, you're recognized then on the bill.
This is Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I know that my other colleague is working on an amendment right now, but I'd be honored to speak on behalf of this bill as substituted by the committee. I personally know Greg Matanani, and I didn't just know him as a deputy director for Parks and Recreation. I knew him as a coach, I knew him as a neighbor, being from the same village, I knew him as a man who had heart and passion for the game of baseball. As his wife shared a story at the public hearing in reference to Greg's dream of wanting to see baseball fields built in our community, just the same way as baseball fields are built in a lot of the places in the East Coast, where they have literally a cluster of fields, and every different organization of baseball ages could be a part of playing all at the same time. And being the passion of his to see baseball played literally from sunup to sundown was a dream that this man had. And as he was working with the plans and working as an administrator for the Department of Parks and Recs as the deputy director, and being closely the oversight coordinator as the deputy director for this project, this was really near and dear to his heart. And as everybody who knows Greg very well knows what his passion was for baseball, be it Little League, be it Babe Ruth, be it the Kaba League, be it any other baseball organization that was here on Guam, there were some other leagues, Madam Speaker, that didn't last as long as Little League. But again, knowing that Greg played a major part of that, even as a little kid himself, being an avid baseball player, and wanting to see this dream come true, I think truly in spirit, Madam Speaker, that if he were alive today, he'd be really proud that the fields are up and coming, that they should be done before the end of the year, and knowing that this dream would really have become a reality, he would have been really, really, really proud. And again, I stand in full support of this bill. I'm hoping that the author of the legislation will make me a part of this sponsorship as I support its efforts. So I'm asking if the good author can make me a sponsor of this bill. Senator Cavill?
I'd be honored to have you as a co-sponsor, again, someone who's been so involved in sports for so many years, so I would have no objection to. I'd like to move to...
I'm making a motion?
I'd like to move to have our esteemed secretary of the legislature as a co-sponsor to this legislation.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I really want to thank the good author for including me in that sponsorship, and I ask my colleagues to support the same, as this is really, just acknowledges again, one of our local residents who had the love and passion for baseball, who's not with us physically, but is, will always be with us in spirit and in heart. I think this is a good tribute to him, so thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Tai Tegui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too stand in full support of this bill. Greg and I grew up together, kind of, per se, he was a couple of years older than I was in GW High School. And I meet up with his children every once in a while out there since his passing, and this would give them the continued legacy that his father had put forth to the community. And every time they speak of their father, it brings tears to their eyes. And to honor him in this way just brings joy, comfort, and especially to his wife as well. And since we're all contributing to this, I too would ask the good author if I, as well, can be a sponsor of this bill as well, if he would include me.
With all these lovely ladies, I have no objection whatsoever.
On the motion then to place Senator Tai Tegui and Senator Guthers as co-sponsors without objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Uggan, are you ready with your amendment? There's a little bit too much sidebar conversation, so we need to pay our attention to Senator Uggan now, who's going to proffer an amendment.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I certainly stand in support of this particular legislative measure. I think that any time that we look at individuals or recognizing individuals who have contributed tremendously to the community, I'm sure that Mr. Matanani, who a number of the members of this legislative body know more intimately than I do, certainly recognize his contributions in the field of the baseball arena. I do have an amendment though, Madam Speaker, if by any chance. I understand that the original legislation had also highlighted the naming of the individual baseball fields in honor of certain pioneers within the baseball arena. And you know what's really ironic is, and I need to put in a disclaimer, that yes, I am biased in making this presentation because an individual... You do not have a copy?
No one up here in the front has a copy, can somebody please make sure that we get copies? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Madam Speaker, I guess, you really don't want me to restart my statements, right? So I'll just continue where I left off, that I do need to provide a disclaimer only because if you look at the proposed amendment, yes, I am biased, and if anyone wants to question my biasness, then delete the name of the baseball field number four, you know, I would not, absolutely not object. But having grown up in the environment of the Little League and having had the opportunity to work alongside, or not necessarily, I guess, work alongside, but join my dad whenever he attended a number of these Little League meetings, as well as a lot of these Little League games, it took a lot of time, personal time out of my life, so to speak, in terms of being able to follow him around, and I was fortunate that I was one of his children, that he said, "Okay, boy, let's go, jump in the truck, and let's go, we're going to go to a baseball game." And then he would be the primary coordinator of many of these tournaments. But Madam Speaker, like I said, I do provide that disclaimer only because obviously, I make this in recognition of the provisions contained in the original legislation. I spoke to the sponsor of Bill Number 245 dash three oh, and he stated that the Little League representatives had recommended that in fact, then this particular section be deleted, only because they felt that these four pioneers that were originally recognized in the initial legislation had contributed tremendously, or in some cases even more, than the individual named in this legislation. I called one of the board members of the Little League, and I inquired as to whether in fact they would oppose, because they were questioning, and they were expressing some concerns about this particular provision being in. And I inquired whether they would oppose reinserting it into the legislation, and based on the statements and the conversation that I had with that individual, the son of one of these pioneers. Apparently, they had no concern, it's just that they felt that in fact, these four individuals should be given a much greater tribute than what would be provided in the naming of a baseball field. But I feel differently, Madam Speaker, I think that in this particular case, that when you have an opportunity to be able to recognize individuals who have worked in this arena, I know that there were several instances when in fact, the Little League, I can honestly say, having worked closely with my dad in many of these activities, that if it weren't for, with the exception if you just delete my dad's name from this, if it weren't for these pioneers to have continued to push and advocate for baseball and the development of the Little League component, because there are other baseball organizations out there, but the Little League component, if they were not there pushing and advocating for the Little League, that it perhaps would not be here today. And I say that with all sincerity, recognizing that both Mr. Greg Cavill Senior, Mr. Greg Borja, and also Mr. Ben Munoz, Major Ben Munoz, were major contributors and original pioneers of baseball here on Guam. So, Madam Speaker, I move for the insertion or the amendment, the addition of this particular provision into the legislation, and I ask our colleagues for their consideration. I do understand the nature of the renaming of the baseball field number four, and if anyone would have moved that that be deleted, then I would recognize that, but I certainly would move in the direction of recognizing these pioneers for these baseball fields. So Madam Speaker, I ask our colleagues for their consideration. This is Massey.
Can we take a minute recess? On the Frank Uggan amendment, which is to add, or to name rather, the different fields, so the whole complex will be named Gregorio, or Coach Greg Matanani Memorial Baseball...
Fields.
Fields?
Or complex.
I thought you said...
Fields.
It still be fields, but Field One will be named as the Commissioner Gregorio, Greg A. Cavill Little League Field. Baseball Field Two shall be named as the Commissioner Gregorio Borja Rookie League Field. Baseball Field Three shall be named as the Major Vicente Ben Munoz, the Guam Police Retired... Is that going to be on the title?
Yes.
Big League Field. And Baseball Field Four shall be named as the Francisco Frank Uggan Senior, Senior League Field. Well, that's the reason why I had asked that question, because that's on the amendment. Senator Guthers, on the amendment?
Madam Speaker, I knew Ben Munoz, he was a police major. We never referred to him as Major Ben Munoz Retired. Why would we want to name a park after him as retired? Just Major Ben Munoz. So moved.
Your motion is to delete then Guam Police Retired parentheses.
Yes, Major Ben Munoz, Baseball Field Number Four.
Yes, Number Three.
Number Three. Take out retired.
Okay, so the amendment to the amendment then, without any objections, so ordered. So now on the Uggan amendment that has been amended, are there any objections? There being none? So on Bill 245 as substituted and further amended on the floor, are there any other speakers? There being none then, there's no objection to send it down to third reading, so ordered. Guam Police. We are now on Bill 155, and I recognize the author, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much. This is Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do have, we do have before us legislation that would provide disregarding the entire title, I don't think you want me to read the entire title, but the original legislation would have provided three components.
Your motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for Bill Number 155 dash three zero CORF substituted by the committee to be placed in third reading for consideration, for voting, please.
And you will want to discuss it?
Yes, please.
Okay, you may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, just so that in fact there's clarification in regards to the impact of this particular proposal. Madam Speaker, this legislation would allow for the recognition of the expansion and the growth being realized in the Guam National Guard, in this particular case as it applies to the entire Guam National Guard. Just recently, about two and a half years ago, the three-star general at the National Guard Bureau was elevated to a four-star general. And in most cases, at that point in time, the adjutant generals for the respective National Guard components were maxed out at a two-star general, so they were major general positions or billets. Because of the recent elevation of the three-star general at the National Guard Bureau, I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm talking military jargon here, Madam Speaker, but because of the elevation of the three-star general at the National Guard Bureau level to equate to the Pentagon level of four-star, now in many states and jurisdictions, they're moving in the direction of elevating the maximum billet for the adjutant general to be reflective of a maximum of up to three stars. Right now, because the Department of Defense has yet to officially recognize that, they're looking at the nature of many of the states and what their efforts, ongoing efforts are, and it looks like the trend is, and many of the states and the various jurisdictions are elevating their adjutant general allowance or billets to equate to a three-star. That's what this provision would do. One component would provide for the maximum star grade from a two-star general to a three-star general in the Guam National Guard, the adjutant general position. Now also, in taking into consideration, Madam Speaker, and I know that I also need to provide a disclaimer here, that yes, I am a member of the Air National Guard, I do train one week in a month and two weeks a year, and yes, I did deploy in 2007, 2008 to Afghanistan. So those are all disclaimers, and I hope that that is sufficient to address my affiliation with this component. Will I benefit as a result of this? No. No, that I would not benefit as a result of this in terms of the allowance, because obviously it will not directly affect individuals in the guard immediately. But Madam Speaker, when I look at this, the other component is looking at the Army side of the National Guard component, the Assistant Adjutant General. You have the Adjutant General position, then you have two Assistant Adjutant General positions within the Guam National Guard. The Army Guard has a one-star Adjutant General billet allowance, which has not incidentally been filled in a while, and the Air National Guard has an Assistant Adjutant General billet, which is capped at a full-bird colonel rank. What this provision would provide is an allowance for that particular full-bird colonel to be maxed out at a one-star general billet also. Would this result in any additional financial requirements by the government of Guam? The answer is no. I think I need to make that clear, because any time that these individuals serve in their respective capacities in their respective ranks, they are only compensated through the Department of Defense or through the National Guard Federal Funds Program. So that's what this particular provision will provide. There was another section here, Madam Speaker, that, just so that people are not, our colleagues are not confused, there's another section here that would have allowed the adjutant general, the incumbent adjutant general, upon the closure of the term of any chief executive or commander-in-chief, to allow that individual to sit for a timeframe of up to six months prior to the conclusion of the term of that particular governor or chief executive. That section has been deleted because it's brought up some serious concerns as to whether in fact it would, I guess, provide some favoritism with the incumbent. And obviously, this was a general provision that would be carried out indefinitely and codified, but because of that concern, that provision was deleted, so the two components would be increasing the adjutant general, the tag position star allowance, general allowance to a three-star, as well as the full-bird colonel position in the Air National Guard to be up to a maximum grade of a one-star general. And I need to also stress, Madam Speaker, that just in the last 11 years, I have seen visibly the Air National Guard component grow from 225 personnel to about 475 where it's at at this point in time. And there's a strong, extremely strong possibility that the Air National Guard would have the opportunity to be able to get some wings, when I say wings, planes, if not by the end of this calendar year, by sometime next year, and that would result in almost a doubling of the Air National Guard at that point in time. That those are information that has already been agreed upon, it's just awaiting some of the formal paperwork. So that's what Bill Number 155 will provide. I want to thank the good chair, Senator Guthers, for entertaining this legislation and reporting it out of her committee, and I ask our colleagues for their consideration. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
One moment, recess.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to, just for clarification purposes, the committee that had presented the amended version, the substituted version, did a fantastic job in terms of deleting and showing the transition from the original bill to what the committee had forwarded out. What I've provided before each and every one of you with the assistance of the, the legal counsel, thanks to legal counsel to Renee, is a provision that deleted some of the sections that already were highlighted by the committee to be deleted. So this is a cleaner version of, of exactly what the provisions would be. So Section Two would deal specifically with subsection B, increasing the rank to lieutenant general for the adjutant general of the Guam National Guard, and it no longer has the subsection A, and then also Section Three.
Senator Uggan?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
If, just so it's clear for the, for the clerk, why don't we get a motion to accept this?
Oh, thank you very much.
Substituted version.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, I'd like to move for the acceptance of the substituted Bill Number 155 dash three zero C O R and further substituted on the floor for consideration and discussion, please, Madam Speaker.
Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I'd like, I'd like to also move the, for the placement, Bill Number 155 dash three zero C O R substituted by the committee and further substituted on the floor into third reading for consideration by the body.
Sorted.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. And just to complete my clarification of this bill, it's a cleaner version of Section Two would deal directly with the adjutant general position, Section Three would be primarily, would primarily deal with the Assistant Adjutant General position for the air component, and that's the clarification. Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker.
Anybody wish to speak on the bill? Senator Ada.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I think I want to make sure that we, we get this thing correct, because right now on page two, as we read it, for example, Section Two, we're amending Paragraph B. If we take a look actually at that particular statute, there's that, Section 63201A, which Which first of all requires that the adjutant general be capable of being federally recognized in accordance with federal law and the Army Air Force regulations as appropriate, in the grade of at least Colonel. Okay, so that's the first criteria for the adjutant general. Then we're making an amendment, and we're saying that he be promoted in the Guam Army or Air National Guard as appropriate, at the discretion of the commander in chief, to a grade not to exceed. Now what we're doing is we're increasing the, the grade from a two-star to a three-star general. That's a state rank, okay? So we've had, for example, I'm not sure if the previous, we, we had an adjutant general that actually held the star of, the rank of one star, but was not federally recognized. I believe the, the adjutant general after him held the rank of two stars. I'm not sure whether he was federally recognized. But then, the amendment that we're making here on line eight is that that individual, whoever's sitting in there, shall serve only so long as federally recognized in such grade. So let's say, you know, the governor, as the commander in chief, can, let's say, appoint, let's say he can appoint me today, I'm federally recognized as a colonel, he can appoint me today to be a three-star general, but I cannot get federally recognized because I have not completed the necessary educational requirements, such as completion of the Army War College. So with this amendment here, and shall serve only so long as federally recognized in such grade, with that amendment, then it means I cannot serve as the adjutant general, holding the rank of a three-star or whatever. So it's important then that we remove actually on that line eight, that last sentence that says, and shall serve only as federally, as long as federally recognized, in such grade, in such grade as the lieutenant general in this case. I think we've already established that criteria, that in order to get to the star rank, you first have to be federally recognized as a full-bird colonel. After that, then you can put on the star, and if you've completed the Army War College, you can get the federal recognition, which is about a one-year process in going through. So I, I think this is going to be kind of self-defeating in Section Two if we actually keep that last sentence in there. So we may have an individual who is a federally recognized full-bird colonel, the governor says, I want you to be my three-star adjutant general, and he can, as long as he's here on Guam, he can go around and, and wear his three stars, but as soon as he gets on that airplane and he leaves the island, he's got to take off that rank and put on what is federally recognized when he goes off island, because that is really... that rank and put on what is federally recognized when he goes off-island because that is really just a state rank. But as it stands right now, now we're saying that in addition to the governor appointing him, now the feds have to recognize him to hold that state rank. And I don't think that that's what we intended to do. So my amendment, Mr. Speaker, is to delete that last sentence which says, "and shall serve only so long as federally recognized in such grade." We are not... We're not eliminating the requirement that he be a federally recognized O-six or Colonel in either the air guard or the army guard. So that then will bring us back to some consistency.
Anybody wish to speak on the added amendment? Any objection to the added amendment? Hearing none, so ordered.
I just have one more. On Section 3, on Section 3, page... I guess that would be page 3.
How come that federally recognition doesn't apply to Section 3? Why would it be the same? I'm just curious.
Because, again, on Section B, you mean? On Paragraph B, line 9, Section 3B?
Yeah.
Because we're saying that he actually... We want a federally recognized O-six to be sitting in that position before anybody can put on that star rank, he must at least have... We would want him to at least be federally recognized. So in other words, he can sit there as actually an Assistant Adjutant General for the Guam Air National Guard who walks around with one star. That is a state rank. But as soon as he gets on an airplane and leaves Guam to go to National Bureau, National Guard Headquarters, he really walks in there with just his eagle on his shoulders and he's a federally recognized, indicating that he has, you know, met all the eligibility requirements. I think that's... I think that part is okay. I think, Mr. Speaker, the... The only other amendment I would propose to make on Section 3 is on line 17 at the end there where it reads, and he's... Starting at line 16, "and shall perform all military duties as may be required of him by the adjutant general, period." The adjutant general is not under his supervision and control. Line 17, so it should end with "adjutant general, period." This is on page 3 of Bill 155. I'm sorry.
Are you... Sure, we'll use it.
Yeah, okay. So on page 2, I'm sorry, page 2, line 22, should end... We should put a period after the word "general." So then you'll read, "the assistant adjutant general shall perform all military duties as may be required of him by the adjutant general, period."
Anybody wish to be heard on this amendment? Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thanks, Senator Uggan, for that suggestion. It's just that this is the same language that is incorporated not only in the law but also it's the same language that is applied in the Army side for the Assistant Adjutant General position. So that's where the consistency comes in. But there's really no objection because it's already plain and clear, "shall perform all such military duties as may be required of him by the adjutant general." Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Anybody else wish to be heard on the amendment? Is there an objection to the amendment? Hearing none. Senator Uggan, do you have any further amendments? Any other members of the legislature wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Uggan? You may close or move it down. Is there a motion by Senator Uggan to move to the voting file? No objection. Okay. We're through with 155. We're now at Bill 230. Madam Speaker is the main sponsor. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 230-30COR as introduced in the third reading file, but I'd like to just briefly discuss it. Oh, that's the first motion.
Is there an objection to the accepting the substituted version? Hearing none, so ordered.
There's no substituted version. And I'd like to make a motion to waive going into Committee of the Hall.
Waive? Pardon?
Waive going into the Committee of the Hall because this is an appropriations.
I'm really having problems hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to waive going into Committee of the Hall because this bill deals with appropriation.
Any objection to the waiving? Senator Calvo? Objection by Senator Calvo. And the basis of the objection?
Can we ask our...
Thank you, Mr. Chair... Mr. Speaker. Again, we have a bill here that is highly substantive in regards to appropriations and specific to certain funds of the government of Guam. In light of some of the issues that are affecting our government and both in terms of collections of the general fund and also in areas such as special funds, and there will be the utilization of special funds in this matter, I think it'd be wise and prudent that we do go into the Committee of the Hall. In fact, it may be wise that we also bring in representatives from the BBMR and Rev. Tax as well as Department of Education. And I think it's just a prudent measure to do.
The chair will take a one-minute recess.
No. No. No, it's not substituted. Yeah, just to wait, yeah, to wait for the Committee of the Hall. Is Frank on this? Because we got information from Bertha at the public hearing.
Thank you.